If anyone happens to have their cellphone on, please turn it off. The public hearing before the Sawyer County Zoning Appeals is hereby called to order at 6:00 PM in the Sawyer County Courthouse in Hewitt, Wisconsin on August 17th, 2021. Present on behalf of the Board Al Gerber, Laura Rusk, Mark Olson, Gordy Christian, is Gordy here? No. Dee Doblist, Jim Tiffany, and Steve Kelsey. Statement of Board Hearing and Procedure. Those persons who are going to give pertinent testimony will be afforded the opportunity to do so. As recognized by the Chairman, that person will clearly state their full name before giving testimony. Each hearing will follow this order: Reading of the Application, Submission of the File to the Board, Applicant Statements, and Presentation of Evidence. Testimony of those in support of the application, Statements from person, and Objections to the Application, Rebuttal as permitted by the Board and Decision by the Board. Orderly Procedure requires that all, requires that each side shall proceed without interruption by the other. All testimony will be addressed to the Board, and there will be no questions or arguments between individuals. Any person who's agreed by a decision of the Board may appeal the decision to the Circuit Court within 30 days of the date following the Board's decision letter. The day following the signing of the Board's decision letter is the first day of the 30-day appeal filing period. This public hearing has been published as a Class II Notice in accordance with Chapter 985 Wisconsin Statute in the Sawyer County Record and the Sawyer County Gazette. The public hearing will follow this order: Variance Application, New Business, and Adjournment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for opening this public hearing. I do believe there's a member of the Board that would need to recuse themselves. Let the record show that Steve Kelsey is recusing himself, and the alternate Jim Tiffany will be stepping in for the first variance application. This is a... Oh, sorry, we need minutes approval, sir.
Did everyone have an opportunity to read and review the minutes from the July 20th meeting?
Yes.
Are there any changes or corrections?
No.
I made the motion to approve.
Motion by Mark Second, by Dee, all those who appear to motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All post same sign. Motion to approve the minutes is passed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One variance application this evening and one appeal. This is a public hearing in the town around Lake, variance number 21-006. Owner David and Allison Farley, part of government, lot 5, lot 1, CSM number 907, Section 30, Township 41 North, Range 7 West, parcel 024741305505.8305. Total acre zone residential recreational two. Application is for the construction of a two-story 24-by-24, 26-by-26 with eaves attached garage, including a 14-by-20 triangular portion connecting to the existing primary dwelling. The proposed garage in addition would be located at 44 feet at the closest point to the ordinary high watermark of Round Lake. The closest point to the existing primary dwelling is located 56 feet from the ordinary high watermark of Round Lake. Variance is requested of Section 6.1 of the Sawyer County Zoning Shoreline Wetland Protection Ordinance, which would require the prior granting of variance for any new structures located closer than 75 feet from the ordinary high watermark with no other exempt structures or reduced setback provisions. By motion of the Town Board, variance is denied. Ralph Hansen, Chairman, Kay Wilson, Supervisor, Virginia Chaback Supervisor. Both the Town Plan Commission and the Town Board recommend denial of the variance application 21-006, finds effects is that reduced distance to the ordinary high watermark is not warranted. Lack of garage is not an unnecessary hardship. Attached garage could or would be used as additional living space. It would be detrimental to ecology, wildlife, wetlands, and shorelands. It would create a topographical problem such as runoff, drainage, erosion, or vegetated cover removal. Signed Kathy McCoy, Town Clerk. There were four opinion letters sent out. Three were returned, one with objections, two with no objections. I have no objections. Steven Kelsey. I have objections. Regarding the variance case referenced, I oppose the variance by Mr. Dave Farley, the reason being that the subject property is located in a small neighborhood and further building would result in more buildings and congestion in the area. If you have further questions, I can be reached at this number, Elizabeth Kohler. I have no objections to this. We would just like to access our property at all times. No vehicles or building materials blocking the road or driveway. Also, if damage is done to the access road, it would be their expense to repair. Lynn Strunk. I have another opinion letter that was sent to our office today. This individual is outside of the 500 feet as required by state statutes. Would you like me to read that into record, Mr. Chairman? This is aligned with Sawyer County's Shoreline Wetland Protection Ordinance. We oppose granting this variance for the following reason: The small lot of an elevated point is very narrow and not conducive to additional development. The point of shoreline facing the lake is already extremely eroded. The site in question is located in an environmentally sensitive area due to surrounding wetlands. Approximately 20% of the .83 acres is actually wetland, and an additional percentage of acreage is road and a peninsula that may be 20 feet wide. Does this small building lot meet county sewer requirements for existing and proposed buildings? Doug and Mary Sites. I also have a DNR opinion letter that was submitted as part of a shoreline setback variance. This is addressed from a Kathy Cromaza and a Kay Lutz of the DNR. Kay and I both reviewed the request and feel that this case where the variance standards are met. There are certainly unique property features here between the water on three sides, slopes, and wetlands. And again, that was from a Kathy Cromaza from the DNR and Kay Lutz from the DNR. That is all, Mr. Chairman.
Could you reread the first sentence of that letter from the DNR?
Kay, who is referring to another DNR member, have both reviewed this request and feel that this is a case where the variance standards are met. There are certainly unique property features here between the water on three sides, slopes, and wetlands.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the application?
I'll speak on behalf of the application, and then Dave probably will come up for rebuttal. I was at the Town Around Lake meeting, and this could be a very short or more lengthy discussion as to whether a small cabin like this, you know, whether a cabin, any size, I guess, in northern Wisconsin should or should not have a garage. I mean, I don't think there's any intent to increase bedroom sizes, so septic sizes wouldn't be affected there. On the parcel of property, there's an existing shed that would be removed if the variance was approved. I think there's about 1,000 square foot of walkway that's, was placed in front of this towards the lake that would be removed as well. I believe a permit's been obtained for excavation up where the garage would go. So it's a very flat area. Dave would have no objection to, if someone said, "I want an engineered plan for runoff for the new garage," or their drain gardens or cisterns or whatever to hold that water, they'd have no objection to that. There was some concern that, you know, David listed the property for sale and that, you know, there may be some living, you could put some living quarter above the garage. And he said, "Well, if someone says, 'We don't want any living quarters up there, and maybe just storage, we have to have a more steep roof.'" Just, the garage is the big thing. I mean, if you have a place on Round Lake, you're paying the tax dollars to be on that lake, and most people that are on that lake have things to use the lake with, whether it's boats, kayaks, you know, noodles and, you know, things like that. And having a place to store those as opposed to on the shoreline or on the side of your house, one is, I think it's an eyesore if you don't have a place to put them. And secondly, if you use it every weekend, I mean, things that are left there can get stolen because you're going to potentially see them from the lake, although this cabin you can hardly see from the water. And if you're not familiar with the exact location, I mean, Round Lake is on the front side, and there's two fingers of a, more of a swampy lily pad areas, the one in the back and then the one to the side. Fish largemouth bass would have been down both of them, but not the main part of the lake, but obviously clearly lake bed. Dave is open to any kind of restrictions that the committee might put on there. He'd just like a place for people to park their cars and maybe in the wintertime park their boats or, whether it's jet skis or kayaks or canoes. So, I mean, there's plenty of mini storage out there for that kind of stuff, but personally we're not going to have enough of that either. But there's just a lot of things that a lake property needs storage for. It's a very small cabin in the first place. It's 20 foot wide, 16 foot on one side and 24 foot on the other side. So, I mean, I think clearly not having a garage in northern Wisconsin is a hardship. And then the way the lot is laid out, it just is, it's impossible to be less close to the water than it is. I've been on that lake for a long time. This person over here may know exactly, but I bet that cabin's been there for 50-plus years, if I'm not mistaken.
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven years. So, obviously, back in the day, you know, you had a wooden rowboat and a, maybe an outboard motor. So, like I said, he's willing to remove the walkway and the shed to reduce impervious surface and anything else that the committee would ask. And if you have specific questions, Dave probably would be better to answer those. And he's here also.
So, the property is currently not occupied?
Currently not occupied.
Has the owner ever lived there?
I think it's my cabin. I think you guys used to own that for your dad. Yeah, it was owned by Kelsey's at one point. So, I think it's always been a summer place. I don't think it's been a permanent residence.
Is it three season or is it year-round?
I think it's three.
I can answer that. I'm right next to it. Well, if you're going to speak, you need to step to the microphone and identify yourself. But you'll have that opportunity in a moment. It's, I would say three season.
Three season now. Intent probably would make it year-round.
One more question. In your presentation, you mentioned rain gardens or catch basins or whatever. Has a design been formulated?
No, but if you said, "We want you to handle any additional rainwater and have it held in someplace where it doesn't run into the water and have it engineered to do that," he has no objection to that.
Okay. That's all the questions I have.
You know, I would think if the DNR put the blessing on it, they must know a little bit about the way to be able to control that.
I would say that people that fill that out are interns at the DNR. Go through the three-step test.
Perhaps before we have this discussion by ourselves, we should call for additional testimony.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, I realize that I didn't read my staff report in the record. I'd like to do so now before calling additional testimony, if that's okay. Yeah. The application is requesting, again, a variance to build a two-story 24-by-24, which would be a 26-by-26 with eaves attached garage, including that 14-by-20 triangular portion that would connect to the existing primary dwelling. Again, the closest port of the addition, proposed variance addition, would be 44 feet to the closest point of Round Lake. This would be onto an existing non-conforming dwelling located 56 feet at the closest point. The height of the proposed structure would line up with the existing structure with a potential additional 412 or 612 pitch, which would then be approximately, is a total height of 24 to 26 feet in height. Again, this is applying for relief of a variance from Section 6.1 of the Sawyer County Zoning Shoreline Wetland Protection Ordinance for reduced ordinary high watermark setbacks. That would require 75 feet from the ordinary high watermark, but no other available area exists on this property. The property is eligible for the 200-square-foot rule. This is the 200-square-foot lateral expansion that would be allowed on an existing non-conforming structure that's at least 35 feet from the ordinary high watermark. Again, that 200-square-foot expansion only works when the addition is no closer to the water. So just keep that in mind. I have made several site visits out there, the last being on May 18th, when I met with the applicant on-site to look at possible additions and alteration areas and measure setbacks on the structure. The applicant had stated that they are looking for a garage area and where a garage could be placed on this property. The lot certainly has some very unique limitations. We looked at a spot as far as digging a garage into the hillside of the property, which would certainly have some challenges as well and would also need a reduced water setback variance. Eventually, it was decided to try and attach a garage to the existing house and have it angled in that the garage doors would face where the existing driveway comes up. The intent would then to be flatten out that top area to create a larger, flatter plateau for the garage placement. This type of grading project would be and could be done without a variance, which the applicant has already been granted a grading permit from the Sawyer County and Zoning Conservation Department. Additionally, the BOA can implement additional mitigation measures as part of this request for reduced lake setbacks. The applicant has already agreed to remove the existing shed from the property that is 80 square feet, located 24 feet from the ordinary high watermark. It also should be noted that this property does have very good intact buffers on, and any approval process for variance could have additional recording of shoreline vegetation protection agreements and any rain garden, catch basins, or other mitigation devices. Thank you. I just wanted to get that in the record.
Okay. Is there anyone else to speak on behalf of the application?
Dave Farley.
State your name when you get close to the microphone, please.
Dave Farley, owner. The reason pretty much, like Tom was saying, that I wanted the garage was for storage. A couple complainants are put in for, you know, for the garage. The one to the left, Liz Kohler, she can't build there. She can't. That's where the driveway comes in. She lives clear up the road. Also, the next one over, which I don't know if they were put in or signed for, that whole place is on a swamp, built on post. So there shouldn't be any problems there. Pretty much nobody can see the cabin. The other thing, you know, if I wanted to, I could put a garage, I could tear the cabin down and put a garage there. I could do, you know, a concrete floor and put it above, but it's going to be way up in air. And, you know, that, nobody's going to like that either. So, like Tom was saying, also, I tried to get rid of the, you know, any kind of impervious surfaces as far as the walkways and decks and everything going to the lake. So they're all gone. Pretty much everything, everything I could do to keep it as far as naturally looking. So, that's about it as far as that goes.
Okay. Anything, any other statements?
No.
Anyone have any questions?
I don't have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak in favor of the application? Anyone to speak in opposition to the application? Yes?
My name's David Strunk, and my mom Lynn had wrote the note as far as the driveway being damaged or anything. When we came up last Friday, I had logs I couldn't even get into the driveway or into our cottage because it's on a Y right at the end of it. We're out on a peninsula, he's on a peninsula. And that's, I have no problem with the variance. You guys can make that call. But that was, I mean, I couldn't get in. Literally was blocked, logs stacked on our driveway on our property. And I told the logger, the guy, you know, "We have to have access all the time during the week. Weekends can't have it blocked." And that's the main thing that my parents said. They don't care about it. I did take pictures and send them to my parents, and they're just, their hearts are broken on how much it's been cleared out in there and just cut down. It just, it used to be such a private area, and now it's just sky, and it looks totally different. I know my mom wished she could have got up here, but she couldn't. But as far as, that's who you guys call. It's a unique piece of property where I don't know how much more you could go out on each side because it's right on a hill. You got the marsh coming in or a slough coming in on this. It's your call, but the main thing is just don't have anything in the driveway. Okay? And right now, at the curve coming in, they've got soap fence in there, which is just fine, but there's a little driveway that goes back to our cottage, too, on the backside, that we store boat trailers and stuff during the summer. You know, right now, there's a little berm, and just sort of things put back. Otherwise, I really have no objection.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Is there anyone else in opposition to the application? Anyone else in opposition? Mr. Farley, you had an additional comment you wanted to make? You'll need to step to the microphone to do that.
I was going to say, I did hear about that, and I was actually trying to stop at the cabin a couple times and apologize, but I hired them, and they actually didn't know any better. I just said, "Here's the property lines. You know, you got to watch." There was a neighbor. And I, I was going to say, I've called your mother before and actually told her, you know, "If you ever need anything, you want me to check anything," which I have. Yeah. So, I do apologize for that, and you're right, unique place. Both of them are. Your cabin, your cabin is a unique place, too, but, like I said, I do apologize. I know he did, too, the logger. So, that was just a mistake on his part. I did say, you know, Liz Kohler owns this. This is the neighbor's property because it is marked. I don't know, maybe somebody, one of his guys did it. They don't know what happened there.
Okay. Thank you.
I do have one other hand raised online here now as well. Go ahead, Kay. You have to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Good evening. I would like to speak as a citizen rather than a Town Board Supervisor tonight. I feel that any approval of this application would be premature because the application would enable the homeowner to have additional living space above the garage due to the connecting triangle, and the current septic is approved for two bedrooms. And I think that the property should be evaluated for any septic improvement for the area if there were additional living spaces in the garage. Thank you.
Living space, they're calculated on bedrooms, and there's no intent to add another bedroom. It's a very small cabin, so any additional living space that they got would be a plus, but there's no intent to put another bedroom in there. It's just not big enough.
But they're adding on to it.
Just whatever the plan is. I mean, so there's, right.
Yeah, there's the garage addition and then that triangle-shaped piece addition.
Right. Now, it is a two-story garage, and the cabin itself is two-story. There would probably be connection to the upstairs of the garage. But Mr. Duffy is correct in that sewer systems are sized per number of bedrooms. If they keep the same number of bedrooms and just make them larger, there would be no regulations on zoning and sanitation to increase the sewer system.
The whole reason for the triangle area was to try to keep the garage on the flat surface of the property because it, if you'd come straight off the back of the house, you'd kind of go over into the hill. If you put a little angle off the house and then start, then it would keep the garage on the whole flat surface of the property. That's mainly why we figured to do it that way. Not really for, well, we weren't trying to get more space. It was just for runoff and everything else. So.
Okay. Thank you.
That was it. Thanks.
Any other comments from the public?
Is there, is there any drawings?
You have to step to the microphone, sir.
Is there any drawings I could look at as far as what he wants to do? Thank you. Would you have a copy of this from my parents?
Excuse me, this is Kay Wilson again. The property is advertised online with a commercial real estate agent as having a garage with additional living space above, which would increase the bedroom space from two to whatever.
It says the variance is a bit applied for, for additional living space. I mean, with, for a garage with some additional living space, doesn't say anything about increasing bedrooms. And it says, yeah, but it's been applied for. It hasn't been gotten. So that's what it says.
Discussion by the Board and motion by the Board.
Well, I was out there after they had already excavated. I wasn't out there before, so, I mean, it's, there's piles of big old trees sitting on the side and equipment there, but the shed was gone already. Deck was cut off the front already, and a huge chunk of the walkway was cut down to where it was on the cliff of the lakeshore. So that was already been, been in the works. Just wanted to note to the Board that. Go ahead.
It was the same for me. I was out there after, after the work had already started. It was kind of hairy turning around in there. It was kind of a chopped up mess. I did want to say that I don't, that DNR letter to me did not say they approved the variance, but that DNR letter says, the way I understood it was, these two gals said, "This certainly meets the criteria for having to apply for a variance." I mean, that is the way I construe that letter. I don't construe it to say, "We think you should give them the variance because there's unique limitations." I think what they're saying is because there are unique limitations, that is a reason for an application for a variance.
I'll take it a step further. I don't think they knew what they were talking about. Those are two, those are two rookies that they got from the lunchroom. They didn't address, every other letter we've gotten from the DNR goes right through the three-step test. They went to the unique property limitation and said, "We think this is fine," which is not the way the DNR works. So I don't know who those gals were, but I'm discounting. I'll agree, it's a unique property that, on the three-step test. I don't think anyone's going to argue that. There aren't many of those around, although there's two right together there, but there aren't many. I'm, the unnecessary hardship, I know our Board keeps going around and round on that of whether garage is a necessity, but I, you know, I heard in testimony here that, you know, it's, and whether it's a three-season or four-season, but it's mainly for toys. I heard bolts and noodles and seedos and storage, but the need for, you know, a garage for storage hardly qualifies as a hardship, and, you know, especially this one, a variance for a two-story garage with the addition to an existing structure, that's, I mean, that's great to, convenience of the owner to store toys. You know, he does have, under state laws, Jay said, he can add 200 square feet laterally as long as it's not closer to the water. But the big one with me, so I guess I could, first one, yes. Second one, depending on how the rest of the Board goes, I don't think it's an unnecessary hardship to have storage for toys. But putting that structure that he's requested on there is going to cause harm to the public interest. That property really doesn't have a feasible area to place a structure of that size that does not impact the area. The purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance, wetland protection ordinance is for promoting public health, safety, convenience, and welfare, and promote and protect the public trust in habitable waters. If approved, this variance would not further the maintenance of safe and healthful conditions and prevent and control pollution through limiting impervious surfaces to control runoff, which carries pollutants. This variance would add 280 square feet for the triangular house and 666 square feet of impervious surface for the garage totaling almost 1,956 square feet of additional impervious, which would, the significant slopes on that land leading directly to water or wetlands on pretty much three sides. And second, protects spawning grounds, fish and aquatic life. And second, protects spawning grounds, fish and aquatic life through preserving wetlands and other fish and aquatic habitats. As variance would encroach on water and wetlands on at least two sites and maybe even three. So I, I can't get, I can't get myself to come to saying yes on all three of the three-step tests. One for sure. Two, I could go that a garage is a hardship up here, but technically it isn't in this case. And, but I just can't get past just with the slopes and the water all around there where it's not gonna damage with that much more runoff. That was my notes.
Any other comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, per the bylaws for the Board of Adjustment, the board would have to follow 4.12, which has A through G as reasons that would need to be followed in order to grant a variance. I don't know what direction this board's gonna go with it. But depending upon which direction you want to go, I would encourage you to look at those findings if you are going to grant a variance. If you find that there's not a hardship, you probably are not gonna have to go through all those steps. But depending upon which direction the board's gonna go here, I'll walk you through those.
Please go ahead and do that.
Sure, sure. So the first one is, A, variance under sub-A is, shall be consistent with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance. B, shall not permit any change in the uses in the established zone districts. That does not apply. Shall not be granted unless it is shown that the variance will not be contrary to the public interest or damaging to the rights of other persons or property values in the area. Shall, D, shall not be granted for actions which require an amendment to the ordinance. That does not apply. E, shall not have an effect of allowing a use, this one does not apply as well because it's not a use variance. And F, shall not be granted on the basis of economic gain or loss. G, shall not be granted for self-created hardship.
I pretty much, that was what my, I went through. I said the intent of the ordinance, what sections of the ordinance it didn't apply to. And I picked out the specific items under our bylaws that I felt applied. And I feel confident that I would make a motion to deny with the, and I could submit it to the record with what I just read in as my findings of fact and law. If there's a second.
Is there a second to the motion as presented?
I will second that motion.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to deny the variance request. Discussion on the motion.
And if you're going to do that, then let's go through and make sure we make the accurate findings. Can we grab that? So what, everyone heard this red. We could base the decision upon this. And then the written decision, what I could do, if you're okay with it, is draft it and have your chairman sign off on it if this is what you actually decide. Fair enough?
Draft it? What do you mean?
Draft the decision? You have to have a written decision?
Yep.
Okay, once again, is there any additional discussion on the motion? Okay. Hearing none, I will call for a vote on the motion as presented. All those in favor of the motion, by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay, let the record reflect that the motion to deny is approved by a vote of four to one.
No, I'll put this together. And if, if the board is okay with it, I'll go ahead and draft this based upon the, what was put on the record. And then I'll have the chairman sign off on it. We will go ahead and get that out.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Give me one second to get to the next spot. This is a public hearing in the Town of Hunter for appeal case number 21-001. An appeal of the zoning committee's decision for conditional use permit number 21-013 Pinewood Property LLC. Part of the southeast one quarter, the northwest one quarter, parcel 012740142407. 1.45 total acres, accepting the west 100 feet, leaving 1.42 total acres. Yeah, you wanna do that now? I'm, I'm sorry. We can stop reading this into record. We do the recuse? I forgot about that. Do you want to state it for record, Al, or do you want me to? Okay. 1.45 total acres, accepting the west 100 feet, leaving 1.42. Part of the southeast one quarter of the northwest one quarter, parcel 012740142404, 2.86 total acres. Part of the southeast one quarter, the northwest one quarter, part of the northeast one quarter, the southwest one quarter, part of the northwest one quarter, the southeast one quarter, lot one of CSM number 8376. Parcel 012740142414, total acres 10.94. And part of the northwest one quarter, the southeast one quarter, lot two, CSM 8376, parcel 012740144204, total acres 0.99. All those parcels located in section 14, township 40 north, range seven west, all zoned at this point residential recreational one. Permit was desired for an additional 37 new campsites. 34 sites are existing, making a total of 71 sites. This conditional use permit is subject to rezone number 21-005 from RR1 to RR2. This was approved at the zoning committee meeting on May 21st, 2021. That is what I have for the description to read into record. Do you want to go through the recuse portion now?
Yes.
Yeah, so we'll note that Laura Rusk has recused herself from this case and that Steve Kelsey is now acting again. Outside of the information that I've presented to you and that you've received in your packets, I did get another letter today. Would you like me to read that into record, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is from, Dear Mr. Kozlowski, I represent Mr. Richard Uline in support of the appeal of decision made by the Sawyer County Zoning Committee's for Cisco's Pine Point Resort. This appeal seeks to overturn an erroneous approved zoning change and approved conditional use permit. This letter serves as evidence of my client's strong support of this appeal. My client's property is in the immediate vicinity of the subject property, and this land has been in the Uline family for generations. The increased traffic density, noise and light pollution of the trailer park would severely impact my client's enjoyment of the property. I know his neighbors, several of whom filed the appeal, still strongly feel the same. The changes previously requested and erroneously approved would represent a monumental change to the use character and quiet nature of the Chippewa Fluge area. Small mom and pop resorts have been a long part of the local landscape, but this proposed large-scale commercial development would be totally different and out of the character of the area. If allowed, it would completely destroy the buccal nature of the Chippewa Fluge. It is absolutely critical at this juncture and point, and to point out that the owners of Cisco Pine Point Resort are currently the subject of multiple notices of violation in regards to the current operation of the property. Their flaunting of DNR and county rules should not go unnoticed. Can we trust an operator like this to follow the county zoning rules and conditions on their conditional use permit in the future? The expansion they have requested is completely disappropriate to the land area and would leave very little green space remaining. There will hardly be any woods left on this patch of the Northwoods. They propose to increase the number of existing campsites from 34 to a total of 71. This would more than double the number of campsites currently located on the property. We also understand that the resort installed 10 additional campsites last year without going through the proper permitting process and recently installed a large patio on the property, also with obtaining, without obtaining the necessary permits. The appeal for the subject property should, the appeal for the subject property should grant, granted in its entirety. Allowing the proposed development to move forward would severely degrade the surrounding area, and my clients remain prepared to explore legal options in order to protect their value and enjoyment of this property. Sincerely, Lawrence Berry, attorney for Richard Uline. And then I'll, I'll turn it over to, to our legal representation and to you as to which way you want to proceed with this appeal.
So I suggest that we start with the appellant presenting her case and those who are in support of the appellant and then who are opposed to the appeal.
Is the appellant here?
Good evening, everyone.
You need to state your name for the record.
I am Darlene Smolin. I was married to Martin Mieske, who purchased the property in 1999. And unfortunately, he passed away last year, so I am dealing this with this by myself. Lynn Senate is the other appellant, and she could not be here because her husband went into the hospital down in Illinois. So she's asking if I could also talk on her behalf. So I just wanted to ask you that. So what we would like to do is request the Board of Appeals to approve our appeal and deny the conditional use permit. And the zoning, of course, isn't yours, but we'll address that later. Our appeal form, I believe, is quite self-explanatory if everyone has read it. But the one thing I do want to focus on is the effects of the value of our real estate and how that will be depressed because of the change of being vacant, our, our one property to basically a trailer park next to us. I have as handouts. Excuse me. Somebody left their batteries. The assessor for the Town of Hunter has reviewed everything, and he has shown that there is going to be a decrease in value of our properties, approximately a total of $200,000, which is, if we break it in evenly, that's 100,000 pieces. That's a lot of money for people who are, are living on their own, as single widows. So let me hand these out.
Ma'am, you don't want those back, do you? Okay, because once, once they're in our possession. Okay, thank you.
This might be a good time. Sorry to interrupt. So on a, on an appeal, there's two different ways that the Board of Adjustment can go. You can do a, what's known as a de novo appeal, where you accept anything and everything in terms of evidence. Or you can do an appeal of the record, which the record would consist of what's just at the zoning committee. I would encourage you to accept all of the evidence that's available to you so that you can make a complete decision. That technically would be a de novo review, so then you would be able to accept such things as what we've just been handed. But that ultimately is a decision for the board to make.
At what point do we make that decision?
You can do it now, or you can do it when you get to making a decision.
You're gonna speak, you need to talk. And identify yourself, please.
Just a, a point of order. My name is Rebecca Roker. I'm counsel for the County Zoning Committee. A point of order, will you address this issue? And I apologize for interrupting your presentation. But under section 8.1 of the Board of Appeals bylaws, it says that the board shall not conduct a de novo hearing.
Right. And I think that that section is completely contrary to the Asserhu's decision, so we're not gonna follow that.
Thank you.
I'm not quite sure why that hasn't been changed.
One of the things on the handout that I gave you was that Mr. Kurzweil had decide, had, had come up with is that the highest and best use really for the property along the lake shore is single-family residences. So we, I hadn't looked at that with regards to possibly, if it was subdivided into single-family residence, the lots and houses of about 250,000 were built on each of them. That would increase the tax base for Sawyer County by about $5 million, probably a minimum of $5 million. So consequentially, I think it's some sort of a loss if they, if you proceed with the way that this application has been made. And there are other things that I think have to have been looked at with regards to the additional people that will be, be there in the summertime if this does go through. What about the impact? What about our sheriff's departments, the ambulances, the hospital and, and doctors and EMTs? So I would really very strongly request that you approve my appeal so that we can move on and not worry about this situation anymore. So I was taught when I was young that when people do things that are wrong, like the Pinewood has done, or in fact are illegal and they haven't been taken care of, they should face any and all consequences that would be involved with that and not go ahead and be rewarded for, for doing something wrong. So as a resident here and occupying my house for over 15 years, I thank you for approving my, our appeal. And Lynn requests the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, before the next person speaks, I'd like to read.
I was just going to suggest that we take a moment to us. We're not going to close the hearing, but give us all an opportunity to absorb what's been presented to us.
And rather do that, so it's in the record.
Yeah. Go ahead. Especially in the other.
So everyone can.
Yeah. Whom it may concern, conditional use permit number 21-013, I've been asked to provide a brief analysis of the property value and tax base implications in regards to the proposed project for the property commonly known as Cisco's Pine Point Resort. The four parcels subject to the rezone and conditional use permit application total over 16 acres with 1,800 feet of frontage on the Chippewa Fluge. The improvements consist of a lodge, eight cabins, a shower house, two sheds and 34 usable pre-existing RV campsites plus 10 sites put in place last year that are under a cease and desist order from Sawyer County zoning. The total assessment value is currently about 1.2 million. All of the current improvements are on lot one of CSM 8376, roughly half of the area, and two-thirds of the frontage of lot one are encumbered by the Wisconsin DNR covenants accepted by the owners in 1989. All of lot two of CSM 8376 and all of two unsurveyed parcels, those ending in 2404 and 2407, are also so encumbered. The extent and of the mitigation of the violations of the covenants were under, were undermined as, undetermined, thank you, undetermined as of the date of the conditional use permit application was approved. I offer three plausible scenarios. Option one, affirm the cup app as approved and presented, assuming granting of a rezone. The 37 additional RV sites may contribute as much as 200,000 to the tax base. Only the in-ground infrastructure is accessible. The park model units worth $40,000 and up are exempt per Wisconsin statutes. The corresponding diminishing, diminishment in value of the adjacent residential properties of the appellants would likely amount to a wash. However, police, fire and ambulance services to these units would still be required per Wisconsin statutes. Option two, deny the cup and rezone applications in their entirety, while this would allow for the current operation of eight cabins, 34 sites, business, a 34-site business as a legal non-conforming use per Wisconsin statute 596910AM and 62637H. It would not deal with the 10 sites developed a year and a half ago that are under the zoning cease and desist order. If this was proven to be economical, economically unsustainable, and the property became subject to redevelopment as residential, the area, frontage and depth could easily accommodate 12 to 15 lots and could reasonably support 250,000, $250,000 homes, which could be expected to result in a net tax base increase in excess of 5 million with no diminishment in value of neighbors' property values. This is the exact proposal made to Gary Cisco five or six years ago by his real estate agent, Steve Bodenshots, that resulted agent, Steve Bodenshots, that resulted in the rezone to RR1 at that time. The local residential real estate market has changed significantly in the last year and a half. Option 3: Approve the CUP and rezones for lots 1 and 2 of CSM 8376 only. This would legalize the additional 10 sites developed last year. While it would minimize any increase in the tax base, it would also eliminate diminishment of the value of the appellant's residential properties. It would also grant the opinion of the appellant, the option of the appellants to market two near-prime residential lots while they comply with the covenant violations as documented by WIDNR personnel. It may also provide some time for everyone involved to cool off. It may provide to be the classic compromise where nobody gets everything they want. I have been serving as the assessor for multiple rural Sawyer County municipalities for 41 years. I have served the town of Hunter in the capacity continuously since 1985. I would certainly appreciate all questions anyone may have regarding the foregoing. Douglas Kurtzwell, assessor to the town of Hunter."
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in support of the appeal? Would you step to the microphone, please?
Linda Zilmer, 902 Holly Hill Lane, Burchwood, Wisconsin, Edgewater property owner. I attended the zoning committee public hearing and I rewatched the videos. And maybe I need to get grounded in what your decision process is tonight, but I understood that the Board of Appeal may exercise one of three options: either reverse, confirm, or modify the zoning committee's decision, and that a reversal is sending it back to the committee. Am I correct or incorrect?
No. So the Board of Adjustment could reverse, and that would be it. They, the appellant, so at that point, the applicant for the CUP's only option is to go to circuit court. So basically, the Board of Adjustment is standing in the shoes of the zoning committee. So they could grant the CUP, they could deny the CUP, or they could grant the CUP with conditions.
Okay, then I-
They could for a review. Right. But I don't know what review would be.
Okay, so in that case, I would like to change my written public comment to I am in support of denial of the CUP or in support of the appellant. And the reason being, and I thought you were, that tonight you would be applying search area review standards. And so I'm going to read it just because I think, having attended the hearing, I do think there are reasons for denial. And of course, I can't see this now. The zoning committee did not follow proper procedures. They did not properly apply legal standards. They acted representative of their will and not their judgment. And a reasonable person would not have acted that day. They would have postponed their decision until some of the substantial issues that were out there were resolved. So the zoning administrator's staff report was very clear in identifying some of these outstanding potential violations and issues that needed to be cleared up. Mr. Kurtzwell testified at both the zoning hearing and the CUP hearing regarding covenants. What the zoning committee did not have, which is part of your packet tonight, is the covenants weren't there. And I think it's really substantial that when you read the covenants, that if the property owner does not come into compliance, there's a reversionary clause. So unless there is compliance, and I think it was 90 days from a May letter, the whole rezone and the conditional use permit might be moot if that reversionary clause was exercised. So as you do your de novo tonight, and I don't know what your process is going to be, but when I looked at your packet, your packet includes the DNR letters and the restrictive covenants that are parts of the deeds that the zoning committee did not hear. So some of the other reasons for my findings were, the committee did not establish a date for the rezoning and CUP applicant to come into compliance. And I think another issue is, that was being resolved on the fly during the hearing was at which version of the zoning ordinance with regard to campgrounds would apply? Would it be upon approval of the campground permit or the CUP permit, or when it would actually be issued, assuming compliance? And then I know the neighbor spoke to some community-wide impacts. Another thing that the zoning committee did not discuss were the number of private wells or the number of conventional septic systems that would be required and where they would be located. And basically, all of Sawyer County soils are highly susceptible to groundwater contamination. And when I look at the density of the development in that campground and the map that was provided to the zoning committee, just showing general areas of conventional septics, and there was no identification of wells, I speak to that all in support of that the zoning committee, as much work they put into it, there was still a lot left that they didn't address. And so then I guess I would ask you to deny instead of reverse and remand. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in favor of the appeal? Hearing none? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the appeal?
Good evening. Again, my name is Rebecca Roker. I'm here as legal counsel for the Sawyer County zoning committee. I was present at the meetings when the zoning committee reviewed this application, had their discussions, and then ultimately issued their approval of the conditional use permit, which I will point out immediately, was subject to specific conditions, including the rezone of the property. That rezone of the property has not been completed, if you will. The board, the Sawyer County board, has not made a decision on that rezone. So the county fully admits that the conditional use permit is not going to be effective until that rezone is completed. I don't know if that is going to be an issue of discussion later, but I did want to point that out right now, that, you know, the county fully understands, and the zoning committee fully understood, that the CUP would not be effective until that, or if that rezone was indeed approved by the county board.
Can I interrupt you one second? From the record, it was made pretty clear that it wasn't only the rezone, it was that the covenants had to be fulfilled and written off before Jay could issue the permit also.
Yes, that was one of the conditions.
From the DNR and Excel before Jay can approve it.
Yeah. And with all due respect, Ms. Rosen, I didn't mean to imply that that was the only condition. You know, the committee-
No, but I was just wanting to make sure everyone understood that, because you said it would be effective when the rezone was.
Right. There were several conditions put on the conditional use permit that all have to be complied with in order for the conditional use permit to be valid. And so when this came before the committee, the committee looked at this pursuant to its legal requirements under 5969-5E, which is also known as the substantial evidence test. And that section of the statute requires the zoning committee to look at an application so long as that application is complete, which was verified by the zoning administrator that it was. So if, because the application was complete, the zoning committee had an obligation to look at facts or information, not merely personal preferences or speculation, directly pertaining to the requirements and conditions on the application which that applicant must have met. And so that is exactly what the committee did. It looked to facts, it looked to evidence, it looked to data. Certainly, there were people who objected to the issuance of the conditional use permit at the hearing and at the meeting, and you've heard some of those objections tonight. And I know that the application to this body also included a description of those reasons. But the fact remains, under 5969-5E, the committee was obligated to look at facts and data that is measurable. And in this instance, what the applicant brought forward was testimony regarding things such as stormwater prevention, such as erosion control measures, such as issues related to infrastructure, like public right-ofways and the roads, issues with relating to traffic mitigation, buffering, and how the applicant would buffer some of the neighbors and try to reduce some of those impacts. And then also a description of essentially the basic zoning ordinances. And as much as I don't want to go through all of those particular points of the zoning ordinance, I think if we did go through section 17.3, which is the RR2 zoning ordinance, which would then take us to section 6.6 of the zoning ordinance, which is the campground ordinance, and all the requirements set forth therein. And then we'd also have to look at section 8.12 of the ordinances, which is what the committee's obligations are when reviewing a conditional use permit. You read all of those together. The zoning committee acted according to its obligations under the ordinance. And furthermore, it acted pursuant to its obligations under 5969-5E. So with that, I think that that is the key factor here, is whether there was substantial evidence to justify the issuance of the permit. On the flip side, if the zoning committee was not going to approve the conditional use permit pursuant to 5969-5E-B, there must be substantial evidence to deny that permit. And the committee didn't have that substantial evidence that was measurable factual data in front of it. It certainly had opinions, it certainly had strong opinions of people who care very much about this land, but it didn't have substantial evidence as it's defined within the statute. And so therefore, the zoning committee, based on all of that information, approved the issuance of the conditional use permit. And I agree with the zoning committee's decision that it was the decision it had to make based on the statutory restrictions it was operating under. Any questions? I'd be happy to answer. And with all due respect, I would like to reserve another opportunity to speak, depending on whether this committee does a, completes a de novo review with respect to some of the information that was submitted after the zoning committee made its decision. And then also speak to some of the elements that Ms. Zilmer raised, you know, pursuant to a search area review, and the four elements of that search area test. I won't go through those now and just reserve that right, depending on what this board decides. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I guess to ask counsel, would it be better if we vote on if we want de novo now or not? Because otherwise, we won't be able to hear anybody once we go into a discussion.
I agree. We should make that clear that we're doing this de novo. I'm assuming that's what you're going to do. If you're going to consider the document that we just received about valuations, you have to be de novo.
I would make a motion that we follow the more updated court case of Osterhus or Osterhus that came after. Our bylaws have not been updated since that case was decided, that I would make a motion that we go de novo and follow the guidance under Osterhus for our decision in how we're going to handle this.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
We have discussion?
We have to have a second. I'll second the motion to institute a de novo hearing. Now we can have discussion on the motion.
I understand why neighbors are upset. But I was under the assumption of reading this that there wasn't going to be new information brought here. And unless there was a smoking gun brought something that, holy mackerel, the committee missed this, and we didn't get to hear all their testimony, we didn't get to hear what the town board heard. I understand that there is some corrective action that needs to be taken place. I don't know where that is, but I understand those conditions can be placed on this. I just don't see that there's been anything presented, other than somebody feels bad that they're going to have another neighbor.
But Jim, isn't that the reason for allowing or requesting additional testimony? When else would they have had an opportunity to, use your phrase, present a smoking gun?
Well, maybe that's the case, if somebody's got a smoking gun, let's hear it. But I think what we're going to hear is people feel bad because their neighborhood is going to get developed. And I feel bad for them. But I, I just don't know if that's enough to say that the zoning committee was an error.
So let me add this. Under 5969-5E, as Attorney Roker commented, under sub A2, the substantial evidence means facts and information other than merely personal preferences or speculation directly pertaining to the requirements of the conditions an applicant must meet to obtain a conditional use permit, and reasonable persons who accept in support of the conclusion. What that means is just the personal preferences of, I don't want this campground here or there, isn't substantial evidence. So if you hear that, if you hear evidence of, we'll use the exact words, personal preference, doesn't mean anything in the context of whether or not to grant a conditional use permit. So if you go de novo and you hear that, per the statute, it doesn't matter. Okay. And so I would encourage you to support de novo. I don't have a vote here. And then after you vote on this, I'd like to talk a little bit more about the standard for conditional use permits, because it is quite one.
Okay. Thank you.
In the discussion, I'd point out, if I may share, that Linda brought up a point on, you know, referring it back. That is overridden also. Our bylaws are outdated because it gives us all the power of the committee that had it. So if they could make the decision to deny or approve, we have the same. So all it's really doing is, you're given grounds for an appeal if you don't hear any new evidence, is basically my take on a major chunk of Osterhus.
Yeah.
It's almost a grounds for appeal because we didn't take any new evidence.
The way I do it is, I would rather the board hear all the evidence, whether or not it's relevant or not, and then make the decision.
Okay. There's been a motion made in second to allow a de novo hearing. Is there any additional discussion on that?
I would just bring up one point. Maybe now is also the time to poll the board on if everybody did listen to the tape.
Yeah. Vote first and then-
Okay.
Okay. Okay. So hearing no additional discussion, I'll call for a vote on whether or not to allow for the de novo hearing. All those in favor of the de novo hearing, say if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion to hear the de novo hearing is passed by vote 5 to 0. Okay, we had an opportunity to go online and view the zoning committee hearing. I don't recall the date of that hearing.
May 17?
May 21st.
May 21st, 2021. Did all the members of the Board of Appeals seated here have an opportunity to view or listen to that discussion?
Yes.
All indicated. All indicated affirmative that they have listened to it. So therefore, we will not replay that this evening.
Sure. And Mr. Chairman, if I may, I want to talk a little bit more about Chapter 59.69, 5B, and specifically sub 1. In my view, this is a legislature. This is anything that we've created. This is what the legislature has imposed on us. If an applicant for a conditional use permit meets or agrees to meet all of the requirements and conditions specified in the county ordinance or those imposed by the zoning board, the county shall grant the conditional use permit. A condition imposed must be related to the purpose of the ordinance and be based on substantial evidence. So that's your starting point.
I can further go on to read those conditions that this board would like to hear those as implemented by the zoning committee.
Yes.
Paulson approved the application subject conditions listed in the zoning administrator staff report and town conditions. They must comply with Chapter ATCP 79 for campground regulations and all other applicable local, state, federal laws. No mobile homes are allowed. All lighting must be downlighting. Must follow all other requirements of the Soria County zoning ordinance, Section 6.6. A permanent manager or designee is available 24 hours per day and no fireworks are allowed. Quiet hours are between 11:00 PM and 8:00 AM every day. Must follow all DNR peer planner requirements for docs and peer placements. Must comply with all DNR restrictive covenants requirements prior to obtaining the conditional use permit, which I will also read. Comply with all other town requirements and conditions, which I will also read. Having added buffering of 150-foot strip of land between neighboring properties, a conditional use permit shall not be issued until compliance with covenants violations is complete and verified by written notice from WIDNR and Excel Energy. Any sites removed or requiring restoration in the process of being compliant with the covenants shall not be relocated and will be taken away from the total number of sites allowed. If 71 total sites are permitted and 10 are lost to compliance, only 61 total sites will be permitted. Number 14, owners and agents must comply with all Soria County zoning ordinance and other regulatory agents as they relate to this expansion. And then 15, any requests or removal or changes to these conditions shall require Town of Hunter approval. That was then seconded by Ms. Hessel. As part of the town requirements, I did read all those. That was actually part of what they said. And reiterating that removal of sites out of the restrictive covenants areas does not permit them to just relocate, that they are then just gone and lost. Per the DNR letter that was submitted to us and to the owner of the property that was dated June 23, 2021, Scotts Department of Natural Resources and the Town of Hunter staff visited the property at 8677 N County Road CC in Town of Hunter on April 30, 2021. In response to the observed clearing and grading and placements of structures on the property, the property is encumbered by 100-foot and a 1,000-foot buffer zone covenants restriction hereafter referred to as the covenants, recorded in the Soria County Register of Deeds Office, Volume 429, Page 203 to 207, and attached to this letter for reference. During the visit with WIDNR, they identified violations of the covenants and determined that additional inspection was necessary. A follow-up visit occurred on June 21, 2021. After the 100-foot buffer zone was professionally surveyed and marked, the following violations were identified and confirmed during this visit. Vegetation clearing and ground disturbance. The vegetation clearing and ground disturbance that occurred on the southeastern portion of the property is in excess of the allotted 30-foot wide viewing and access corridor described in the covenants, which provides that filling, grading, placement of structures and cutting of native vegetation within the buffer zone is prohibited with the exception of allowing that native shrubbery and dead and dying trees may be cut and ground elevation may be mowed to provide water access corridor. Access corridor shall not exceed 30 feet in width for any 100 feet of shoreline. Sufficient native tree seedlings shall be maintained and native tree species planted in access corridors to maintain a wooded canopy. Covenants on page 205, the DNR documented this work being done inside the 100-foot buffer zone with covenants restrictions and found that the grading and clearing was in excess of the allotted 30 feet for the 100 feet of shoreline. This filling and grading primarily occurred underneath the structures placed on sites 8, 9, 10, and 11. There was gravel added under these structures as well. There are then prohibited structures. The covenant requires that all structures within 1,000 feet of the shore must be natural wood or painted earth tones, and it is provided that they cannot exceed 35 feet in height. The covenants allows existing structures located within 100-foot buffer zone to remain unless they are moved, repainted, or replaced. Events that trigger the compliance with the covenants. The covenants further provides that filling, grading, and placement of structures and cutting native vegetation within the buffer zone is prohibited with the exception that allowing for certain peers and signage per the covenants, page 205. Structures that postdate the covenants were observed on the property within the 100-foot buffer zone restrictions on April 30, and new structures were also observed on June 21 in violation of the covenants. All the structures within the 100-foot buffer zone must be removed or moved, and the ground beneath and around them must be restored accordingly. This letter serves as the informal written notice of violation or the aforementioned covenants restriction. The covenants provides that violations are not removed or corrected within 90 days at the receipt of this notice. Title to the property will revert to the vested in the grantor by this letter and based on the assurances that all filling, grading, clearing, and construction in the buffer zone area will immediately cease. The DNR agrees that you have until October 15, 2021 to correct violations identified here. More specifically, it is our understanding that you agree to follow these terms of the deadlines. You shall immediately discontinue all clearing and grading activities inside 100-foot buffer zone. By 10:15, 2021, plant native trees and shrub species in cleared areas inside the 100-foot buffer zone to restore the natural appearance and remove all gravel that has been added to the buffer zone. By October 15, 2021, remove all structures within the 100-foot buffer zone except those that were on the property prior to 1989. The recording of the covenants have not been moved or altered. These structures must comply with the exterior color and restrictive and height restrictions referenced in paragraph 3. Revert campsites located within the 100-foot buffer zone restriction back to a transient use. This means that structures are not and will not be allowed on sites 8 through 15, 17, and 19 through 20. And they do then reference a map indicating of that. So there are some sites that are in violation of the restrictive covenants, which the DNR has indicated. Again, part of the conditional use permit, one of the conditions is that those sites that are in violation of the restrictive covenants cannot just be moved to an alternative location on the property, and they're basically lost. So you're looking at 11, 8, 9, 10, 11, 11 sites. So again, per the conditions that were enacted, this total request for 71 total sites would then end up being 60 total sites as referred to from the DNR violation of the restrictive covenants. Again, they still have till October 15, 2021 to address those violations, which we're still two months away from.
Yeah, thanks. So again, the starting point is what the statute tells us. We have an application. And if the applicant agrees to meet all of the requirements and conditions specified by the county ordinance and those imposed by the county zoning board, the county shall grant the conditional use permit. Those conditions have to be imposed by substantial evidence. And I believe I have not heard any objection to the conditions. Is that correct? Have you received any?
No, the applicant, per the zoning committee, agreed to the conditions. The initial applicant for the conditional use permit.
So.
Back to public comment.
Back to public comment. And I think you guys are a little bit stuck, to be quite frank, based upon what the statute is. There is not a whole lot of room in terms of what options you have here. The way that the county, if it was its policy decision, wanted to prohibit campgrounds in this area, you would have to remove campgrounds as a conditional use. But under the current law, it is conditionally permitted. Under the Golden Sands decision, the date that the application for a conditional use permit was made, that's the law that applies to this. So even if the county put in a moratorium or changed the law, it would not apply to this application.
Jay, in the letter that you read, there was a language about a buffer zone. And what was the size of that?
Per the DNR restrictive covenants, the buffer zone would be a 100-foot setback of a natural vegetated area that would allow a 30-foot wide viewing and access corridor for every 100 feet of frontage.
No, not that buffer zone. The buffer zone between this property and the neighboring property.
Yeah, so the applicant, let me see if I can grab a map here and bring it up. So the applicant actually specifically took out a 100-foot wide piece of land as part of this request, which whether it was their intention to create an additional lot or whether it was their intention to give additional buffer area. Yeah, I'm getting it to here so we can all see it on this. Here we go. No, that's the DNR one. Okay, you can kind of see it on this map here and the map up on the screen. I can try to zoom in here too. So the owner of the property owns this parcel ending in 2407, if you can see up on the screen. Their request is specifically not to touch this full 100 feet, this 100-foot wide lot. Now again, if their intent is to create that as a single-family dwelling lot or is it just to give additional buffering from the campground use from the neighboring property, that wasn't further discussed. But then we would also have a Section 6.6 of the Soria County zoning ordinance, an additional 50-foot setback from a property line from the campground for a site designation. Thus, it'd be a 150-foot setback from the nearest current other-owned property. Does that make sense? They specifically left this 100-foot wide strip here. And again, the campground site designations need to still be 50 feet from that. In essence, 150 feet then from the closest neighbor.
So it's just vacant? It would remain vacant? It wouldn't be required tree planting or?
No, that wasn't discussed as part of the restrictive covenants. Now again, now I don't know what the owner's intent is for that. You know, if they carve that out as a single 100-foot wide lot, they could create their, they could build on that lot.
Just could not be used for campground.
Yeah, no campground.
Correct.
Are no other restrictions or covenants?
Not that I heard.
Yeah, and that was kind of the point that was discussed, that it was having that added buffer of 150-foot wide strip of land between the neighboring properties. Now, I'd have to go back to see if that site could ever, if that property could ever be developed with a house. I would think that it was really is a concern to mitigate some of the neighbors' opposition that the campground would be 150 feet away from their property.
Okay, thank you. Was there an additional comment from the? Yeah.
Regarding the buffer.
Please identify yourself.
I'm sorry, Linda Zilmer. I spoke before with my information. As I recall watching the hearing today, I believe the applicant agreed to planting some kind of vegetative buffer, possibly even mentioned pines along that strip. And I think that ended up being part of a supplemental part of the motion. And it might be in your minutes. But that was in the hearing as I listened to it again today, I believe. And if you also are considering, you know, that you don't have a choice other than, you know, the legislature didn't give you one. The other thing that I forgot to mention in my earlier testimony was the parcel across Highway CC, which was part of the original rezone, was removed. Yet during the CUP hearing, they were talking about using that for trailer parking. So I don't know if it was cleared anyone as to the, that accessory use to the campground and resort being trailers and things, if that's really allowable or not. Thank you.
I think Rebecca wanted to reply to some of the stuff that was said. Rebecca, I believe, wanted to address some of the issues. I don't know if everyone else has done.
Yeah, I was going to call for the comment. Is there any additional public comment regarding either for or in favor of the appeal or against the appeal?
Tom Duffy, on behalf of the applicant. And first off, I want to make clear that even though it's a de novo review here, you don't want the applicant to go through their whole presentation that they did in the zoning committee because everybody's seen that, correct? I mean, that's correct. We don't want to do that.
No.
Okay, okay. And I was just going through the appeal form and what the reasons for the appeal was. And I mean, first was it was that procedurally a CUP cannot be approved before the Soria County approves his zoning change. That's the first reason. And clearly, the CUP was conditioned upon the approval of the zone change. So obviously allowed. And the zone change could have happened first, but the county board has tabled that a number of months. And I think it comes up Thursday again. So obviously, it's conditioned upon that. There's a cease and desist in place, they say. And I wanted to just briefly discuss that. In the sale of the property from Cisco's to Odenjats's, I represented Cisco's. And the 10 lots or 10 sites that they're talking about in the sale, I mean, Cisco's, I think, said that there was 50 sites, 50 campsites there. And there were 34 that were known to be developed. And so they were of the mind that that was always approved for 50 and that they could do the other 10. So I think that came from the sale, not from the owners saying, we're just going to throw 10 more sites in here. The prior owners said we had 50 campsites. And I think that's what they went off of. And when they were told to stop, it did stop. And obviously, that's part of this as well. And there's nothing in the record that says they're stopped from doing those 10 sites. But that doesn't prevent a CUP from being approved. They were concerned about documentation missing to make a sound decision was not available. And one of the things they talked about is no saturation test. And I'm not sure what a saturation test is. And maybe that's septic. But obviously, if there's septic systems going in, obviously, per tests that need to be done and the proper systems to handle that many sites would have to be done. They talked about no impact study. Increase in seasonal population would cause an increase and strain on social services, hospitals, ambulances, ambulance service, and sheriff's department. And I guess my comment to that is that we're a tourism area. And I don't know if that was our concern. We probably would limit the size of the Berkey and maybe get rid of the lumberjack championships and the fat tire fest and maybe not allow high school sporting events to come into town because it causes too many people come to town. I mean, if obviously, you've seen the zoning committee's approval of this and the restrictions that have been put on and the requirements that the applicant has to meet before it's going to be approved. I mean, I don't know. You could have done more in putting restrictions on the campground. I mean, 150-foot buffer. One of the things I would note too is that not more than a mile away is a 200-unit campsite. I think Chippewa Campground. And I think Crossroads and Chippewa Campgrounds and other 20 sites. There's a number of, I guess, trailer parks. And this is the trailer park, it's a campground. But Tiger Muskie has 110 trailers at their resort, which I don't think have impacted the property values of the surrounding neighbors. of the surrounding neighbors. I would note that I just was involved in a sale of the K O A campground, which obviously is very dense, and I would never stay at a campground like that. But the sale price on that campground was 4.4 million with no water. So to say that campgrounds don't add to the value, tax value, is clearly erroneous. I mean, you can't sell a 40-acre parcel of land off water for 4.4 million without adding to the tax value. I just don't think there's a valid reason for this board of appeals not to approve this. The zoning committee went in-depth into putting conditions on it. The applicants have agreed to all those conditions. And obviously, they don't get the permit until all those conditions have been met, including the rezone, complying with the DNR, and everything else that was talked about. So Oden Schatz's may have some additional comments, but I think the zoning committee did a very good job of setting forth the guidelines and criteria for getting this. It's, there's more than a few of these on the water there. Treelands have one. Not that far away either. Well-run. And one of the things, last thing I would say is that when you have a home next to an existing resort and campground, it's hard to not believe that that at some point in time might be expanded on land that you own. It's like I own a piece of property next to a gravel pit. Yeah, but the gravel pit got bigger because they had to move to get more gravel. So if it was a brand-new application and a brand-new request for resort and campground, I could understand a little more that this is completely new to the neighborhood, but it's been there for 50-plus years. So, any questions?
I don't disagree with the statement that it's been there for 50-plus years, but it hasn't been expanded in that 50-plus years.
Oh, but they've owned that land for that amount of time. Not all that time, most of that time.
I agree.
And there's a lot of, I mean, the conditions that have been put on this have been more onerous than some of the other campgrounds that have been out there. And I'm fine with that because of the layout of the land. But I think the committee took that into consideration by putting the 150-foot buffer in.
One more quick question, and maybe you can't answer that or someone else here might be able to. Have any of the issues that were addressed by the DNR, have those been actively, has correction actions actively been started?
The Oden Schatz's, I'm sure that they're actively in the process of correcting them. Obviously, they're not going to let property be reverted back to DNR. And if that's a condition of getting the additional campsites, it'll be done before the time that required to have it done.
October 15th isn't that far away. But I saw a gentleman raise his hand up. Do you like to speak, sir?
Adam Oden Schatz, Pine Wood Properties, Cisco's Pine Point Resort. To answer your question, Mr. Chairman, yes, we have responded to the DNR with a letter saying that we will comply with their letter. Now, that's not part of this package here, but we can provide that to anyone as they would want. As far as the primary concern with the 100-foot buffer zone and the structures that need to be removed, there are three park models up there, which we are moving one in the next two weeks and then the other two as our season slows down, but certainly before October 15th as we were told to do. And then as far as the rest of it goes, it's a matter of getting some equipment to get the gravel out of there and going to, I guess, it was winter greenhouse to get the native vegetative buffer. That's what I was told by the DNR, so.
Have they given you any direction on what they consider adequate for vegetation to be reestablished?
Reseeding of, they said native vegetation mix is what the winter greenhouse, you can buy from the winter greenhouse. No, they didn't say quantity or density or how much you got to spread out, but don't know what else to say about it. Okay.
Yeah, ultimately, it has to comply with the DNR standards. And we have specific standards that we would have for buffer zones, for a fully revegetated buffer zone. But I would defer to Kyle in that this is their covenant. So if this is a Sawyer County buffer zone violation, I would be getting involved. But I mean, you're specifically working with the DNR's restrictive covenants on this one. So I would talk with Kyle Marinoff at that point.
Because a 1,000-foot setback on the hillside where the proposed new?
I'm sorry, I could.
Proposed new development on the open hillside or toward the back of the hillside, is that impacted by the 1,000-foot setback in covenants?
Well, it's within 1,000 feet of the lake.
Is there going to be an issue with color and height of units placed? That type of thing?
Oh, no, we'd have to follow all the native color and I think the tallest unit we're going to put up is maybe 12 feet high.
That was more of a curiosity-type of question than something that was germane to our decision. So, thank you.
Thanks.
One more comment I have is the application for the appeal is based on the committee doing or the board doing a certiorari review. So the four questions that are completed here that you see is basically the law for doing a certiorari appeal. You're doing de novo. So if this were to go to circuit court, that would be the standard that the circuit court would apply? I think that's what Ms. Roker was going to comment on.
Okay, thank you. Any additional testimony either in favor of or against the appeal?
Steve Oden Schatz, also owner of Pine Wood Properties, Cisco's Resort, Adam's father. We originally applied for 150 sites at this location on both sides of the road. We met with, of course, a lot of neighbor opposition to that. It was pretty, like I told a couple of people in my letter to Santa Claus. And so we dropped that, and we just are on the one side of the road now. And then in concerns for Darlene, our neighbor, we decided not to go up to her property line with the RR2 zoning. We kept that, we're keeping that RR1 so that may be used as a residential lot in the future. But we're not going to have any campground there. We're never going to apply for one there. And then from that lot line, our own lot line, we have to stay 50 feet from there. So we're 150 feet from our lot line and probably 180 feet from our house. We did talk about put some screening up there. We probably will just for our own perimeter. The, we met on-site with Kyle from the DNR a couple of times there. And we're cooperating with them. And we have a very, very heavy hammer over our head, possibly of losing the property if we do not comply. We're not stupid, we're not going to do that. And so we have to move three park models off the frontage within that 100-foot. He considers those structures. So we said we will comply. We'll take those off, we'll put them farther back on other sites. He did say that once we reestablish those, take the gravel out, that we can use those as transient sites. We aren't going to lose the sites, Jay. You can check with Kyle on that directly. But that's what he assured us in our walk-around. So whatever we have to do, comply with the DNR. We've got a series of things we have to do here. And I assure the committee and all of our neighbors that we will comply. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, sir. Sir, very quickly, you mentioned the possibility of putting up a screen?
Possibly, yes.
Is the screen a structure?
Screening. It was screening for vegetation.
Screening, vegetation screening. Not a movie screen.
No, or fence, or snow fence, or?
No.
Okay, thanks.
It wasn't, no.
That was not a condition.
It was talked about at zoning committee, but it never made it into a finalized condition.
All right. Any further comment?
Douglas Kurzweil, 11055 W Arrow Road, Hayward, Wisconsin. And this is primarily just a little background information. The pattern of development around the Chippewa Flowage historically has been little pockets of development, generally at the end of dead-end roads. And that is how we managed to have a couple of hundred miles of undeveloped shoreline at this stage of the game, 100 years after the flood. We've got a number of mobile home parks, trailer camps, RV parks, whatever you want to call them, scattered around the Flowage. Someone referenced the big one at Tiger Musky, pretty much at the end of a dead-end road. Someone referenced Treelands, which is one of the newer installations adjacent to the Flowage. But it's not on the water. It's actually off the highway. It's out of sight completely from the highway. You can't see even one of the trailers when you're driving by on B, even when the leaves are down. Indian Trail, Dead End Road, 25, 30 sites up on the hill in the woods. Another newer installation, Shady Nook, five, six years ago, something like that. Again, long dead-end driveway end. It's tucked back in the woods. You can't see anything from the road. You can't see anything from the water. And I do believe they have the people pull all the units out at the end of the season. Someone referenced the big ones down the road from Pine Point, a mile. The Chippewa Flowage Campground or Chip Camp, the Robinson installation has been there for decades, 50, 60 years, something like that. It's, again, no residents can see it except maybe across the lake, from across the lake, as you might be able to. The new installation, North of Herman's Landing, again, it's 35. The typical number of sites for these resorts with 6, 8, 10 cabins is 30, 35 sites. Deer Run has about 30, 35 sites up in the woods in the back. The ones that I've heard the most about in Sawyer County I call them trailer camps on the water are over by Proskies Little, what used to be Proskies Little Poland on the west fork on B. It's now Musky Tail, where they've got a 51-unit operation that was in there for better than 30 years. And I get a few comments, yet, how in the hell can zoning let something like that happen right out there by the road? And then out of my jurisdiction, but one I do get to drive by once in a while is up by the dam on Nelson Lake. It's right out there by the road. And I think the problem that a lot of people have with this proposal is in the, I like to call it the grassy knoll, but it's probably the grassy bowl. It's going to be visible from the water and it's going to be visible from the road. And that's a concern of a lot of people in the neighborhood out there. So I'm glad you're sitting on that side of the table tonight, and I'm not. But I appreciate the opportunity to share a little bit of my thoughts with you. Again, that development on Flowage, whether residential or commercial, it's little nooks and crannies, little hamlets at the end of dead-end roads. It's not right out there, front and center. And this one is.
Thank you. Last call. Anyone else to speak either in favor of the appeal or against the appeal? There are none.
Someone can make a motion.
Yeah. Look for a motion to either approve the appeal or a motion to deny the appeal. And then we can have a discussion.
I would make a motion that the appeal is denied.
I would second that.
Okay, motion's been made to deny the appeal. Motion's been made and seconded to deny the appeal on discussion.
Let me just clarify what that is. Are you denying the appeal and going with the conditions imposed by the zoning committees?
Yeah, mine is to uphold the zoning committee's decision and conditions.
And any modifications to those conditions?
I don't want any. I think they did a good job and went through, and I can go through and give you all my reasons if we want to sit here for a long time. But I think they followed the law and did not impose their will. They used their judgment. But yeah, so it's going to be, their decision stands is what my motion is.
Any additional discussion on the motion to deny the appeal?
I would point one other fact that really didn't get drawn out in this dealing with Act 67 that I think was kind of one of the more important things. I realize it was just rezoned, but under Act 67, I don't know what section it is, but quoting, it says, "Upon adding a conditional use to a zoning district, the municipality rejects by the very act the argument that the listed use is incompatible with the district. An application for a conditional use permit is not an invitation to reopen that debate." Permit application is instead an opportunity to determine whether the specific instantiation, I guess is how, of the conditional use can be accomplished within the standards identified by the zoning ordinance. So by the very act, the courts had told us that if that's in there as a conditional use, it's compatible with the area. So that would have had to been a discussion they had to have on the rezone, not on the conditional use that it wasn't compatible. So I just wanted to point that out, that that was part of my thinking on this also.
And that rezone application is coming up here in the near future?
At the county, yes.
And this conditional use permit is subject to that rezon?
Might I add a little bit of law to that?
Yes, that's why you're here.
So you did a great job with your decision. Your findings as to the fact, I think we can.
I haven't got to those yet.
Okay. So we kind of need to put all that together. So we've got to put together what your findings and facts are, which is you have an application that was made. According to the zoning department, it is complete. And correct me if I'm wrong. That there were conditions imposed by the county and the zoning committee that the applicant is agreed to.
Yeah.
So I would make those your basic findings of fact. With respect to the conclusions of law, I would cite specifically 59.69 sub E in terms of receiving the application that it was complete, that the applicant has agreed to it, that there is substantial evidence to support those conditions. And pursuant to 59.69 sub E sub D, that it must be approved.
Well, I may have done way too much work then because I went through every claim that Gal had and did it according to the record.
Probably more your facts versus the law.
That's my analysis. I went through all that she claimed. But then I had findings, the facts, conclusions of law. And they're kind, you're kind of summarizing them, but I went into detail. So, I mean, I can let you see what my, or if you agree or don't agree before I take 10 minutes and read them.
Based on what Mr. Carlson said and what you have described as a summary, would your motion utilize his verbiage? Or would you like this to be included?
I guess I'm asking him.
You could do it either way. You're much more comprehensive than him. But it's basically following the same thing in addition to 59.69.
So I'll leave it up to you. Which way do you want to go for? I mean, if it gets appealed.
Yeah, it doesn't hurt to have this if it's appealed.
Then I'd like to add it to yours as supplemental on the reasons you listed.
Then you get to read it.
Jay? No. My motion to deny the appeal, my findings of fact are the applicant is requesting a CUP to expand a campground. Number two, a campground.
Number two, a campground is an authorized use by, or is authorized by conditional use in RR2. Property has received a recommendation from the zoning committee to the county board to be rezoned to RR2, which is currently pending before the county board. The COP approval is contingent upon approval by the county board. For, the property would become part of an expansion of an existing campground on an adjacent property currently being used as a campground and has been for numerous years, and the property has adequate access to public roads, Highway CC. Conclusions of law, the BOA finds includes the following regarding the standards of review on the conditional use permit for the expansion of an existing campground, is a proposed use permitted in the zone by conditional use permit. Conclusion, the proposed use is permitted in the residential recreation 2-zone district by conditional use. Finding the Sawyer County Zoning Ordinance 17.3 per NB per N1 provides opportunity for the proposed use as a conditional use permit, mobile home parks and campgrounds. Will the proposed use be interest to other property in the immediate vicinity, negatively change the established character and quality of the area, cause possible hazardous, harmful, noxious, offensive or nuisance effect resulting from noise, dust, smoke, odor, and other factors? Conclusion, the proposed use would not be interest to other property in the immediate vicinity and will not negatively change the established character and quality of the area, and will not cause possible hazardous, harmful, noxious offenses or nuisance effect resulting from noise, dust, smoke, odor, and other factors. Finding the BOA finds a campground expansion in this location with the conditions proposed would not be interest to other properties in the vicinity, nor will it negatively change the essential character of the area. There are numerous other campgrounds and resorts in the immediate vicinity, and the proposed use is authorized in RR2. Therefore, under Act 67, the use is compatible with the district since no substantial evidence to the contrary in the record. Will the proposed use negatively impact its physical attractiveness, existing topography, drainage features, erosion potential, vegetative cover, the prevention and control of water pollution, the location with respect to the flood plains and floodways? Conclusion, the proposed use will not negatively impact its physical attractiveness, existing topography, drainage features, erosion potential. And I apologize, that's just the way I learned it from the Board of Appeals training I've been through. Vegetative cover, the prevention and control of water pollution, the location with respect to the flood plains and floodways. The finding is the, the BOA finds that with the conditions proposed, licensing and permitting requirements, there will not be issues with the proposed campground expansion regarding its physical attractiveness, existing topography, drainage features, erosion potential, vegetative cover, the prevention and control of water pollution, the location with respect to the flood plains and floodways. There was no substantial evidence in the record as required under Act 67 indicating a negative impact. Does legal access to the subject party, property for the development exist, or will it exist at the time of final plat? Conclusion, legal access exists for the subject property with Highway CC. Finding access exists to the subject property on Highway CC. Will essential services be provided to accommodate the use, including but not limited to school facilities, police, fire protection, emergency medical services, irrigation facilities, and will the services be negatively impacted by such use or require additional public funding to meet the needs created by the requested use? Conclusion, essential services will be provided, and this application will not negatively impact existing services or require additional public funding. The request for, finding the request for a campground expansion with the conditions attached will not significantly affect essential services nor will it negatively impact them. There was no substantial evidence in the record as required under Act 67 indicating a negative impact. And the last one, are the conditions imposed related to the purpose of the ordinance and based on substantial evidence reasonable and to the extent practicable, measurable, and may include conditions such as permits, duration, transfer, renewal? Conclusion, the conditions imposed are related to the purpose of the ordinance and based on substantial evidence reasonable and to the extent practicable, measurable, and may include conditions such as a permits, duration, transfer, renewal. Finding the record shows the conditions imposed and agreed to by the applicant conformed to Act 67 requirements through, one, follow all applicable state, county, and town ordinances and laws, which include licensing and permitting. Two, reasonable as to protect health, general welfare, safety, and economic prosperity of the area. And three, provide for covenant adherence. And that was my reasons.
And for clarification, Act 67 was the Act 67 that amended Wisconsin statutes 59.69 sub-E.
Yes, there was the stuff you mentioned before I read.
So you amended your motion to that, I'm assuming?
To what you just said.
To what you just, to what you just read into the record, correct? And you're going to second that?
Okay, any discussion on the motion? I guess we've already had that. Okay, all those in favor of the motion to deny the appeal, signify by saying aye. Aye. All post same sign. Let the record reflect that the motion to deny has been approved by a vote of 5 to 0.
I'll prepare a written decision and forward it to the chairman to sign. I'm assuming everyone is okay with that? That's your, okay?
Okay. Thank you all for coming here this evening.
We've got new business.
Yes.
Is there any other business?
Is there any other business that may come before the board?
I don't think we have anything next month, but we do probably the following month.
Possibly September.
Possibly September. I actually might even be into October, it'll be, be into October. I have heard some scuttlebutt, I don't think anything's been filed yet, but it sounds like there's going to be an appeal of the Board of Appeals that will be going to Circuit Court for the one we heard in July, for the Cudare property that was close to the water. Miller's. Just to give a heads up to you guys, that you might be subpoenaed for something like that. I don't know how that works, I've never seen one go that far.
Okay. Excuse me, anything else of concern for any of the board members seated here this evening? Here are none, I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made, I'll second it. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All post same sign. We are adjourned.